Good morning. It's now eight o'clock and I'll call this December eighth. County Council meeting, the order will start by honoring our nation with the Pledge of Allegiance. Our first item on the agenda this morning is DJ Sigler for an additional appropriation. Perfect timing.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Typically, as is my one lately, I'm here asking for money. The good news is it is not counting much. As I have told you in the past, our child support program is one of the most successful collection units since they've been here for a county of our size. And with that designation comes some recompensation federal government. They provide us with incentive funds for the outstanding work that our caseworkers do. These are federal monies that are returned to the states because of the hard work and diligence of the child support collection unit. In furtherance of their mission, what I am asking you is to allocate monies for laptop computers. These incentive funds can be used for variety of things. Typically, they can offset some personnel costs. But most, I suppose, the projects that are most easily approved are the ones that deal with hard assets. In this particular case, our caseworkers have labored for years with a single laptop when they're in the courtrooms upstairs. So their offices are on the bottom floor of the courthouse. And the bulk of their work, however, with the public is done up on the third floor in the courtrooms. Okay? And so for the, over the years, we've only had a single laptop. That laptop has become aged and is going out of service. What I'm asking for today is permission to allocate these federal incentive funds to purchase of tablets for all my caseworkers. If possible, I think it'll make it more productive. It'll certainly be a boon to the public because it'll prevent caseworkers from having to run the three floors down to their offices back up. I know they don't enjoy that and I don't like that for them. So it's a very simple request. We're going to be asking five tablet computers and funds to purchase five tablet computers. This does not come again from County General, but from the federal incentive funds that we have already. So it's simply a reallocation of funds that we already have. I think it'd be good thing for the public, I think it's a good thing for our caseworkers. Also, in the idea, in a time of COVID, I think it's interesting to, in the event, although I don't anticipate it, in the event that we were to undergo some kind of shutdown or some kind of limited work from home situation again, this will allow them to work from home as it stands. They can't necessarily do that because their in-home computers can't run the state's software on iSense, which is a dinosaur program. So in the event something like that happened, it would be helpful for them to be able to access the county's technology and access the state's technology from their home. So that's my request. I'm happy to answer any questions.
DJ, well, you said when the, it's easy to get projects like this approved. What's the process when you're looking at spending that incentive money on a project, on anything? What's your process as far as approval?
Sure. Typically, we contact the state's liaisons or the federal government. The Title 4D FSSA will contact them and make sure the project is within parameters. Most of the times it is. We have used these funds in the past historically to fund certain portions of certain positions that do 4D enforcement work in our office. For example, our receptionist at present time handles non-support applications from walk-ups to the window, if you will, who want to join the child support enforcement program. And so a portion of those funds can be used to offset those personnel expenses for the county. So it's a 50-50 type display. However, we have to document on the interior what their time commitments are to the 4D program. We're not allowed to spend the money, so it's not 4D related.
Okay, so it's something that before you bring it to us, you've already taken through the process as far as knowing that it fits the criteria.
And I would point out that we did this, I believe, two years ago with the desktop computers. We had aged out the technology just on desktops. And so we purchased, we had purchased two years ago new desktops for our caseworkers. We're exploring what we can do with those in the event, or right now, until we get comfortable with tablets, we're going to maintain those units for our caseworkers. Ultimately, what will happen is we'll resituate those desktops with whatever guidance the state gives us. But right now, just to keep everybody productive.
How is your fund balance in this incentive fund? Because it's not an automatic year.
No, you know, and I'm spoiling the councilman because for me, it's been an automatic. You know, since I've been prosecuted, last four years I've been prosecuted, it's certainly been an automatic. And I think that speaks to the dedication and diligence that's there. They've maintained this level of excellence for a long time. And certainly the government, me, it was predated me under John Lightlet, under Matt Renshler, and that myself. So the balance is, it fluctuates from year to year depending on, you know, a number of factors. But we typically see, I'd say anywhere from $25,000 to $40,000 returned to us as a result of our efforts. The tough thing with the fact is you never know. We don't, it's almost a don't spend it, lose it kind of situation. And so we've always tried to be creative and diligent and come up with a good fit for the community to fit our caseworkers to stick them in funds.
So it wouldn't necessarily be available if you needed it next year for salaries for like part-time?
No, it's not always available for that. I tend not to rely on it because it does fluctuate. But on the same, on the same time, I've become accustomed to a certain balance and I try not to rely on it. That's a good point.
Any further discussion? Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This morning with Councilman Barrett being joined online or virtually, we'll be calling for individual votes. So I'll just go down the line. Councilman Wheeler?
Yes.
Councilman Hodges?
Yay.
Councilman Warner?
Yes.
Comfort, over to you. Councilman Barrett?
Mr. President, I just have to ask, is Councilman Barrett in CJ's or is he fully prepared to participate?
Great question.
All right. That's for Lishel.
Okay. And I am a yay as well.
Thank you, John.
DJ, you also have a transfer resolution.
Yeah, you also do. Can't get away yet.
Something like that?
Great.
Oh, this is, yes, thank you. This is a transfer from our, from unused training funds. Some of you may be aware, we've, we're undergoing some staffing changes in my office. Denise Spencer, with no apologies to Mrs. Gatten back there, will be leaving my employee work 4K. We're sad to lose Denise, but we're excited for her too. Jennifer Patrick is going to be becoming a deputy prosecutor. She's graduating from law school and will be sitting for the bar shortly. She's going to be, she's going to become a deputy prosecutor. So her current administrative security court administrator slot is going to be filled. One of the challenges for us at a time of COVID is making sure both of those positions, both Denise's and Jen's, are high-volume positions. Denise is our victim's advocate, deals with all the victims in this county and external to the county. And Jen deals with all 1300 or 1400 criminal cases that move through our spirit or annually. So these are huge positions in our office. One of the things we've identified are employees to fill those slots. However, these three, as much as I was giving K to business, we have hired Carly Canock to be our new victim's advocate. Carly is currently a probation officer. And we're very excited about her coming on board. What I'm asking is an internal transfer from our training form where we have unused funds to pay Carly for the time she's going to begin December 28th. That will allow us to have both Denise and Carly in the office at the same time so we can train. And after the first of the year, have a seamless transition as possible. These $1,000 is simply, it's money that's already been allocated to the prosecutor's office. It's not in addition to, it's simply a way for us to pay for, to have Denise in the office at the same time so that we can have her trained appropriately. And again, it's, it's an enormous job for those of you who have ever worked with our victim's advocate. Extraordinary, extraordinary amount of work goes into that. And really, a lot of, not only good things for our victims, but for the county as well. They, that person administers our program, our victims of crime act grant, and that also defrays personnel expenses. So it's a big, it's a big job and we want to make sure it's done right. I'm confident Carly can do it. I'm confident Denise can train her. So that's the, that's the request, an internal allocation of money that we already have to this, to this individual to allow her to come be paid and be trained.
Let me move through the transfer.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
While we're on the subject, it's not relative, or it's relative to your office, but not this particular issue. I saw yesterday by email that there was a posting to fill a part-time position in your office?
Yes.
My, and, and please correct me, my recollection was, we approved that, that it was a temporary part-time position and that we weren't approving a full-time, part-time position, or a permanent, part-time position. So I guess I was, I guess I'm inquisitive as to, if that is the case, why we're filling that now, or if I'm wrong, but that would be exactly why you're filling it now.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't think, well, I don't, I don't want to say that you're wrong. I think the understanding we had was that it was, that was a Band-Aid at the time when our criminal case violence in 2002, '03, '04, and '05 went from 650 to 1,300. And we were, Tina Stinson, who had been a receptionist in our office, was leaving to pursue her, her education as a nurse. It allowed us to bring her back and hiring new employees from the team on board to train. So to that extent, yeah, Councilman, you're, you're right. What we, I think what I said at the time, or what I recall saying at the time, and please correct me if I'm wrong, was that we weren't going to morph that part-time position into a full-time position. We weren't going to, in other words, we weren't going to add a full-time staff person. Based upon the volume and based upon what we've got right now, I absolutely need that, that person in front of the staff, particularly with new, two new hires coming on. So yeah, to the extent that we were saying that, I think the concern at the time was, was it a backdoor way to get a full-time employee? And the answer was no, we weren't looking for a full-time employee. And I'm not going to come to you and ask for another full-time. So if, we might be saying the same thing, just in a different way. If, if, if it's the council's concern that you want me to return and seek approval in the next budget cycle for that full-time position, I'm happy to do so, justify it at that time. If you're asking me, do I, that this was, there was a sunset provision on that particular position, the answer to you, there wasn't.
And my understanding that it was a temporary, part-time position, not a permanent, part-time position, that's the reason.
Yeah. And I, I, maybe it's tomato-tomato. I certainly never was looking to make a full-time permanent position. That's a good idea.
So just make sure I follow this discussion.
Sure.
Is this a part-time position that is going to be needed for long-term?
It's certainly going to be needed through the next year. And I hesitate to say, I hesitate to say long-term when I don't know what changes are in store for me with two new employees coming on board. I don't expect any drop-off in production, certainly. I'm not going to allow that, actually. So I expect us to state it in court. In the future, as we get through the period, first three, four, five months, I'm going to have to reevaluate where we stand. But in understanding that the council's, during the time of COVID pandemic, the council's purbies, that's the hiring or adding employees at a different time. I'm cognizant of that, I'm mindful of that, and I don't want to be managing any more folks than I need to manage at any given time. If we can do the job better last, if we can do the job better last, I think that's my commitment. On the other hand, I come back to the same old chestnut that I've dropped before this body before, and that is the numbers keep going up and that's going to necessitate additional folks to do additional work. So I'm not prepared to say, no, I won't need it. I'm certainly prepared to say, I'm, I'll come back and ask for it if I do.
Mask, because I see.
Yeah. I, I think that was always my understanding with the council, we're going to do this on a limited, one-time basis. It continues to be limited, and in particular, Mrs. Stinson, here, she's been working 16, 17, 18 hours underneath the 29 and a half that the council authorized. We've been trying to pull down those, those costs to ourselves. So it's, it's definitely worth consideration and by this body, and I'll bring it back to you when we're careful with our view.
Okay, I do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. Councilman Wheeler?
Yes.
Councilman Hodges?
Aye.
Councilman Warner?
Yes.
Comfort?
Yes.
Over to you.
Yes.
And Barrett.
Oh, John's trying to call me, so let me, is he corresponding with you?
He's, he is, he raised his hand last time on here, but. Oh, yes, he just raised his hand.
Oh, okay, good.
Okay, all right. So would you have a vote? And I am, I as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, John, I just wanted to make sure you were following us, that they said that you just tracked him. All right, sounds good. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Wagner, Erwin, and Shealy recommendations for positions. Just as a refresh, the Personnel Committee did meet, we did send several positions to Wagner, Erwin, and Shealy for. And they did make recommendations, which we did receive in our packets on those positions. Jennifer, do you want to speak to this at all? Yeah, that'd be great.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I don't know if you want me to go through each one individually, deal with them separately?
I think we can deal with them together.
Okay, sure.
That would work, right? One vote for, yeah.
Okay. Well, there are four total positions. And as you can see in the memo, Wes did review each one and made a recommendation for each one. The recommendation for all four was to reclassify them to a different classification, which would increase each position's salary by a small amount. And I don't think those figures are in there, but I believe Jana did give you those figures to show you what the difference in salary would be. But in each case, there were a little bit different circumstances. But in each case, the reason for reclassification was basically due to additional job duties or just that something was missed in the original classification. So I don't know if you have any specific questions on any of them.
So the Personnel Committee told them to put this in front of Wes?
Yes, the Personnel Committee advised Jennifer to send these four positions to Wagner, Erwin, and Sheley.
And did you pass it with favor on the new recommendations, or how did the Personnel?
No, it did not come back to the Personnel Committee for further discussion.
Okay.
It's, it's, has been and will continue to be, my, my personal opinion is to follow the recommendations of Wagner, Erwin, and Sheley.
Yep. I just have one question on, on all four of them. Added job duties on every one of them, okay? So they have more responsibility. Who did all these jobs before they were put over to the new, to reclassify?
Well, I'll start with the case of the civil court reporter in Superior Court. My understanding with that, and Judge Bob, I believe, wrote you a letter because you didn't need to be here today. But with that particular position, he's, my understanding is just with the added duties that he has to take on, he wanted somebody to be able to do a lot of supervisory stuff dealing with staff that he just doesn't have time to do anymore.
Okay.
So he did those job duties essentially before that. In the case of the payroll assistant in the auditor's office, my understanding there was that they just kind of redid things and just with the demand of needing documents, there needed to be, the file management clerk is part-time. And so when people would come in and when she wasn't here, there was a need for somebody to get those documents for people. So they got together with the clerk's office and made an arrangement on how that would work. And so Tamela is taking over those duties when Mary is not here. The, in the clerk's office, I believe, in, in those two cases, it wasn't necessarily that someone else was doing the duties. It was just, some of it was misunderstanding when Wes originally classified the positions and just putting some of those duties in there that should have been in there before.
Okay, thank you.
I guess Denise not here to speak for that.
Any more questions for Jennifer?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We accept the Wagner, Erwin, Sheley recommendations for reclassification on these four positions.
I have a motion.
One second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. Councilman Wheeler?
Yes.
Hodges?
Aye.
Warner?
Yes.
Comfort?
Aye.
Over to you, and Barrett.
John said that he's not getting his mute button or something's wrong with him, so he'll be voting by raising his hand on the screen and you should see that.
And while we wait for Councilman Barrett, I'm also in on it.
Do those, okay. Are those new salaries reflected in the salary ordinance?
No, I believe we'll do an amendment after the first of the year to the salary ordinance for these four positions. I ask that they not be included in the salary ordinance that we're going to approve. The amendment's due later today because this was not yet approved, so. Speaking of which, that's the next item on the agenda is the amended 2021 salary ordinance approval. Jana, would you, do you want to speak for this?
So I'm presenting you with an amended salary ordinance. Jen and I have discussed it and there will be a new process starting next year to review it. Not only they're on, I review it, but Jen will also, because she actually caught a couple, a couple of my errors. The amendments to salary ordinance are removing the item for the auditor's office, amending the clerk's salary and her chief deputy salary. I made a mathematical error. I also corrected the deputy salary for, salary for the assessor and reassessment because I added certification pay. And it should, and it should be separate. And Tim got that for me. And then the last thing is Jen reminded me that the veteran service officer, when Ed was here this past year, he actually went from salary to an hourly employee, and hourly employees are not needed on the, on the salary ordinance, just salaried employees. So it is the same ordinance number, it's just going to say amended on the cover page, and it would just still be ordinance 2020, unless.
There's been a lot of discussion about this salary ordinance since last month. And a concern is that somehow something was in the salary ordinance that council had never discussed. It wasn't in our budget, in our email packet with salary ordinance, it wasn't included. And then last month, we were notified that there was a line item for performance services. And, and it was, help me out, it was performance bonuses. So can you, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how that, how that happened.
Um, well, how it happened was that when the prosecutor's office came to you, I gave me the idea. And I had, I had sent you guys an email explaining what had happened. And so I, after seeing another office give their employees performance pay, I reached out to a council member and discussed that I would like to do the same for my employees and our, and our, and our auditor's fund, not County General. I was advised to put it on the salary ordinance. I discussed it with another council member and asked for their feedback. I honestly assumed it was discussed between members. And shame on me for assuming, I, I understand that I should have brought it to every, you know, everyone, I, again, I thought it was discussed. So it was just, I guess it was just a lapse in judgment on my part. And, and I guess that's, I mean, that's bad. I guess I took, I, I mean, I guess I took advice that, or, you know, direction that I know I, that I.
There was a request for an executive session or an additional meeting. And I wasn't sure that we'd have time to get that in. So I did, I did say that I would allow for input from county employees if anybody wanted to speak to the salary ordinance that was approved in November, that's being amended today. So I will open the floor and allow anyone to provide any additional input. Yep, I totally understand. I appreciate that input.
I've been around a long time, so I remember back in New Year's, the council, council put in a lot of money to the budget for County General. Their department gets to review their employees. And that was based upon a several forms that the department would through, look at each individual person in their department and basically give them a score, those scores that reflected a certain amount of money that was given as a bonus on the long. that reflected a certain amount of money that was given as a bonus beyond the longevity on that. I agree it should be for everybody. Anything for 2002, funny, you know, health department, I mean, I'm into that situation.
Yep.
But I agree it should be for everyone, but there was a process that was because so you didn't just see favoritism to people in the department, there was actually a process and more than that, that's probably a certain amount of money.
Okay.
I'll stop for that too, if you can, on that. Our policy name does refer to performance, not performance bonus, but performance pay. wording there, but it does say that in order to receive performance pay, you need to have an evaluation. There is a specific process which includes the evaluation through HR and then a, and through.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that if department heads and elected officials desire that this be re-implemented, it be operated and reviewed, the policy through human resources. And then actually the commissioners take a look at it and then our role is in approving funding or not, if I understand correctly.
Believe you're right.
So if there's a desire that this be considered, I think it should be handled through HR and the commissioners. They can set up a policy and we can determine whether to fund it or not.
Anyone else?
I agree with what you have to say.
As we've talked about processes here, I think it's important that we all recognize and stay cognizant of the fact that there is processes. And this line item 17800, I guess I would like a little bit more, I'm not real clear, a little bit more input on exactly when that was added to the salary ordinance.
Well, again, as I discussed, I had, I'm going to the council member and they advised that I, that I put down there and, and you guys had the packets two weeks ahead of time. You guys could call me, ask questions.
I think part of the problem is we're, we're working off, we're like, I prefer an emailed agenda. So I dug through some things. I, I have the emailed agenda and I dug through some things and found my packet from last month unopened. So when I placed a vote on a salary ordinance, I was basing it off of the packet that I received by email. And that line item was not included in that salary ordinance that was emailed to us. So I have a, I just have a concern about that. Like if things are being changed between the email and the mail packet and then if there's a change between a mail packet and what's on our desks the morning of, we certainly need to be aware of that. But I think that council requested packets, an agenda two weeks ahead so that we could prepare for the meeting. And if, if changes are happening between that time, then there's really no point in receiving it two weeks ahead because our appropriate, our preparation is a waste of time when there are changes.
Well, and, and again, I think, I think at this point, again, I stated it's, we're beating a dead horse. I understand, you know, and I, I won't, you know, it won't happen again, so.
Well, when we talk about procedures, we're not beating the dead horse here because this was something that was put in without council's approval.
And because I was directed to. And again, I, I.
But Jenna, you're the auditor. You know what the process is and you know you can't be directed to put that in by one council member. You know that.
And again.
So when you use that as a, as an excuse, to me that, that doesn't, that doesn't justify it because you knew what you were, to put it in there by the approval of one member is not the rule, is not the way that it gets added. So there is a problem. It's unethical. My conversation with you is that it was not in the budget binder when the budgetary cycle was started. It was not in the packet that was mailed out two weeks beforehand and it was not in the email that was mailed out prior to that meeting. So my question still is, when did that line item get added to the salary ordinance? After we voted for it?
No.
Because my, I specifically sat here at the last meeting and addressed the fact, had anything changes. It was everything the way that we understood that it was supposed to be. So when was it added?
It was added before your meeting.
And then was it brought to anyone here that that was an addition that was added before we voted on it?
Again, yes, I know there were council members aware of it.
But it wasn't brought up for discussion for all of the council to have that information to vote on a salary ordinance that included that. Your, your statement is there was, how many council members knew? There was two council members, so it wouldn't even be a majority of the vote for it to, for everyone to have that knowledge. That's my problem. We didn't follow procedures and we acted unethically.
Any further discussion? Okay, go ahead.
We can acknowledge that the auditor did not properly inform us of an additional item, but we were also incumbent on recognizing that from our packet being there. There was something there that we didn't know about. I think our responsibility is, I guess it's a reminder of due diligence. I didn't recognize that that was an item. We should have, but ultimately the auditor should not have added that item without a procedure as the prosecutor did for his.
And I would just remind everyone that council only makes decisions in a, in a regular stated meeting with a quorum and a vote. Just so the public understands that as well, that our decisions aren't made in, in conversations that are had outside of a, a meeting. Is there any further discussion on the amendments to salary ordinance? I entertain a motion to accept the changes.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
No second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the changes to salary ordinance 2020-12. I'll call for the vote, Councilman Wheeler.
Yes.
Councilman Hodges.
Aye.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Comper.
Yes.
Overdeer.
Yeah.
And Barrett. Anything? And while we wait for Councilman Barrett, I am an aye. This all of this data. Next item on our agenda is the Whitley County Chamber of Commerce membership. Is there anyone here to speak to that? We did receive a letter from the, with the County Chamber of Commerce. As well as an invoice for renewal. Did everyone have a chance to review that? So this was sent to the, I did notice this was sent to the commissioners. Have the commissioners reviewed this?
Yeah, I think George is going to email me and ask for, you know.
Okay. George, had you asked that this be included on the agenda? Okay. What action are you asking for council to take? Are you asking for us to approve the? Sure.
That's great.
Anything else?
We just felt like the council should, should review it. Now, I would say this, I know it says Whitley County Chamber of Commerce. I get that, but Chair Busco has a Chamber of Commerce too. So if you're going to join one, I think you should join both. That just, that's just my personal opinion. South Whitley does not. They, they belong to the Whitley.
Right, yeah. But George, you say you're on the fence about this a little bit because you just don't think we need to belong to it because we really don't get, the county doesn't get a benefit out of it or, or what?
I'm not sure. Again, it is representative of the whole county. And represent Whitley County, not this Columbia City.
Right.
And I, I guess we thought we need to support our, our businesses. We need to support.
The whole county.
Within Whitley County, but.
I, I would agree with you on that, yeah.
Didn't see much payback.
No, I don't.
On it, so.
So that would be an unfavorable approval or unfavorable recommendation.
We took no action. We took no action other than to say, let's let the council have.
Well, now come on, guys. You're not afraid to give us a favorable approval when you send anything else to us.
I, I think.
So would this be favorable or?
I think it would have been, but we didn't take official actions. So I, for us to say, oh, it's unfavorable, well, we, we can't because we didn't do it in a meeting. So I think it'd be unfavorable, but.
A couple of questions. How long have we been a member of the chamber? Does anybody know? And have we ever been approached to be members of the Chair Busco Chamber?
No, I'm sure not.
And have we engaged with the Chair Busco Chamber of Commerce to find out membership dues or?
I got, I got it very much.
Bill, I think if you remember back, I think it was higher in this one time when, and we cut it way back because we didn't think we was getting.
Yeah.
Getting anything out of it.
But I think we should show some support to them. They support our efforts to attract industrial business and industry in the county. I think we should support them. I'm not sure what degree we should support them, but I think we should be a supporter.
Does EDC support it? Does EDC support it?
I, they work with them. I don't know, just probably shouldn't get to ask me, but I do wish they.
We support EDC.
They work with us.
I, I do know that the chamber and the EDC worked together often. Jennifer Zartman-Rivano and, and John Myers at the time would, you know, they would call on, on companies, businesses together. They, they worked very well together. You know, I, I, I think I fully support the Chamber of Commerce and, and, and their efforts. I know that they do a great deal for local business and, and I, and I also know I've, I've done chamber visits with businesses in South Whitley. So I, I know that they're out there. I can't say the same for Chair Busco. I don't know, I haven't had the opportunity to do so, but.
I believe the benefits of the county are intangible, probably more in the fact that if someone is looking to consider relocating here, the fact that local government does not, is not a member might raise a question.
I'm a little confused on, I mean, I, I'm all about supportive, but I'm a little bit confused on why we would be a member of the Chamber of Commerce.
Why, why?
Why we would be a member of the Chamber of Commerce as a government body?
I think for probably no other reason than to just support their efforts of doing the same thing we're trying to do and they're supporters of that.
Yeah, I think it's about ultimately the economic development position of.
Yeah.
There are lots of organizations that are invited to the Chamber, churches and other nonprofits, just to say, we are supporting, we're working together as a community. The only reason I could see.
I, I honestly don't remember 12 years ever, ever seeing an invoice. Flowers, if you'll remember, we, we've been getting a $500 bill a year for flowers for downtown, so, but I don't honestly, I don't honestly remember ever getting a Chamber bill.
My sense is that this is a commissioner budget item. We don't need to take action. We can encourage them one way or the other, but it's their decision. I mean, we don't have to appropriate funds for it. There's no means by which that's been brought to us.
I agree. I'd be in favor. Continuing, continuing the membership to the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, I'll make a motion that we give a favorable approval to the commissioners to continue with supporting the Chamber of Commerce.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it and I would like to offer an amendment that we support them at the continuing level, that we recommend that we keep the current level of support and not one of the higher expenditures.
Well, I think that would have to be their decision. That's kind of the way we're passing it to them though, right?
All right, I'll withdraw that.
So we will put it on the next meeting agenda.
Okay. So I do have a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote, Councilman Wheeler.
Yes.
Councilman Hodges.
Yay.
Warner.
I got one question.
Yep, go ahead.
You said you get a bill for $500 for them for the flowers for downtown Columbia City? Yep. So the county's paying for the flowers in Columbia City?
Well, I, I don't think we're paying all of it, but I mean.
Part of it.
They put out a, somebody, I'm sorry, I don't know who sends us the bill. I really don't, but.
I think it's for the flowers that hang in the courthouse square.
Yeah, I think.
Well, they hang on.
The city light poles on the courthouse.
They're taken care of. I, I, I'm not, they look good. I, I'm not saying I'm not, I'm just saying that's just one of the things we have paid for in the past.
Okay. Yes. Councilman Comper. Overdeer. Barrett. And I am also, yes.
And.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, and Don, I would encourage if you are familiar with anybody with the Chair Busco Chamber of Commerce to contact us about some, about equal support of their organization.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the year-end transfers and additional appropriations. We'll start with the transfers.
First one is, I had some additional supplies this year with COVID and one of my, and I did actually, I planned on, on the, on the long run, I planned on purchasing a stand-up desk a couple every year. I had purchased them for our office and they, I had some, one of my employees was, went unpaid for a few weeks due to maternity leave. So her funds were there to transfer supplies to cover those additional expenses.
We want to do all individually, you want to just go through?
I think you should just go through the stack.
Okay, and then Amy Moner probation, that was one of the individuals again that we had to train. That was one of the individuals again that we had to try and change their account because the name changed from Liz. So the beginning of the year, it came out, their first pay came out of the old account for the salary ordinance, and then the next pay was the correct account. So we didn't appropriate any money in that old account for their salary. So it was negative. So we just transferred to zero it out. So that's what probation is. And then the commissioners, they had some transfers and if you want to speak to that, you want me to keep going?
Yeah, please. Yes, yes.
Um, because of all the money they saved paying out of the trust fund for group insurance, they were able to transfer to liability and property insurance, which is always a, it's always a very unknown. They can do their best, but it sometimes, it usually ends up being more because we have a, we have a, an audit for our liability insurance and everything like that. We usually end up having to pay more. There was a mental health, the landfill was over because I think all the extra projects that Rose sends us, the telephone was over, tax statements and IT services. So those are all the transfers from group insurance to those.
I have a question regarding that. This in no way negatively impacts the trust fund amount?
I'm sorry.
It doesn't, does this impact the trust fund amount? The account?
It's already been impacted. I mean, we, we've saved it about $400,000 so far, so. And we have, I believe, 502 the last time I looked, so.
We're not in any danger of a catastrophic.
No, it has been approved. Blessing. I think that line had like a $1.2 million expenditure. We've made like four payments out of it, so. And, and, and that thanks goes to the employees who are on the plan. That's who, that's who you thank for those savings, so.
So, yeah, so those, so that money was saved because payments were made out of the trust fund and so they are able to transfer that. And then the last one is for the health department. I think it's just underestimated by God and birth. So, and it's easy to do. And I'm going to do it sometimes. I'll estimate that. And then leave up those answers.
I'll make a motion that we approve all the transfer resolutions as presented to us. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Councilman Wheeler?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yay.
Warner?
Yes.
Comper? Over there. And Barrett? While we wait, I'm not. All right, moving ahead, we've got additional appropriations.
So the first one, as you can see, is for the lack correction on rehabilities and jail tax. Early in the, earlier in the year, the commissioners had purchased a body scanner. Um, so that additional needs appropriation. I think you guys approved it last year. We just never did the additional appropriation and I was going through over expended and I seen that, so advertised for that and that's ready to be approved. And then for Hume cap, um, again, there were some projects that you approved from Mark, like the courthouse tower restoration. Um, so he need, there are needs. There's a need for additional appropriations and building maintenance and then also equipment and program maintenance. And most available for, to preferred IT. Um, we ended up purchasing computers that preferred IT inform system. That was equipment program maintenance. So I believe it. So it's $100,000 for building maintenance and then $50,000 for the equipment and program maintenance. For the additional, both of them added together.
Okay. Any questions about the additional appropriations?
I'm making a motion to approve additional appropriation resolutions.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote. Councilman Wheeler?
Yes.
Hodges?
Aye.
Warner?
Yes.
Comper?
Yes.
Over there.
Yep.
Barrett? Banks is not. All right, we'll move on to the commissioners' report.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Actually, we're, we're going to talk a little bit about ADA here, okay? Let me give you some, some background. Several years ago, we were advised that we had not met the ADA specs for the county. So I took a little training, became the ADA coordinator. And we just never really got a transition plan done. We just, we didn't. So last, a few months ago, NDOT made it clear to us that without a transition plan, we will not, we will not receive any more community crossings money or any of the, any of the grant money. So it became apparent that we have to do something. At that time, we hired considering resources to come up with a transition plan and they did. And it's beautiful, beautiful work. Bill, if you want to come on up, I'm just turning it over to Bill Exler here in a second, but I'm just trying to give you the backstory here. So now, now, when we think about Whitley County and ADA, you, you can take out Columbia City, Sheriff Busco, South Whitley and Larval. They're their own. They have to have their own. So we're talking about unincorporated areas. That basically left us with Donatella Village, Bell Sognow, pardon me if I'm not saying that right, and Lincoln Point. Those are the three main places that, that we had to have checked to see what in this transition plan to how those worked out. So at this time, I'm going to turn this over to Bill Exler from ERAI and let him explain why we're here today.
Good morning. As Don explained, there's a federal law that requires that you make accommodations for people with disabilities. And the way that the state of Indiana has addressed this for all communities is through NDOT. And in order to receive state funding or federal funding for transportation projects, you have to be compliant with the ADA requirements. As Don indicated, the commissioners hired us over a year ago to come up with an ADA transition plan, which involved investigating curb ramp sidewalks, building access, building facilities to ensure that they were ADA compliant. We came up with a list of projects that needed to be accomplished in order to bring the county into compliance. Now, understand, compliance is not an immediate requirement. Your plan lays out, these are the deficiencies. And you have to come up with a plan annually to address those deficiencies. In the case of Whitley County, your building manager has been addressing some of the ADA issues over time. A good example is the entrance to the restrooms. There used to be a door in the hallway that was removed to make access easier for folks with disabilities. That was a minor thing. One of the things that our study showed is that the sidewalks and curb ramps in the three residential subdivisions that Don mentioned have significant needs. When they were built, the sidewalks were not built to ADA standards. There's slope deficiencies. The curb ramps are not up to standard. And so as part of this whole study that we did, we put together a plan to address those issues. The downside was that that price tag was in excess of $3 million just to take care of those residential subdivisions because of the deficiencies. We completed the plan. Midsummer, the commissioners approved it. We started looking for opportunities for the county to be able to fund this. There are no state-buried grant funds that can assist with this, but the federal government has transportation dollars that are available. What that entails is in putting an application in to the Indiana Department of Transportation and the funding is 80/20. The county, if they, if you do move forward with this application, would be competing with other communities across the state for the approximate $100 million that is available in this call for projects. The, I sent some information to all of you last week, just so that you wouldn't be surprised this morning by numbers. But basically, the project would cost about $3 million, just a little in excess of $3 million. The county share of that project would be just in excess of $600,000. The way that the funding works is that the early phases of the project, the first two and a half to three years are basically the fieldwork and engineering design for the project. And the way that it's handled is, and that cost is $230,000. And so what the state requires is that the local government agency pay the, whatever consultant is selected to do that work and that would not necessarily be us because there's a process that needs to be followed for selection of consultant. So you would pay that invoice and then they would reimburse you your 80% share of that cost. The big hit comes at the very end when you have to pay for construction and construction inspection and you have to pay that in a lump sum before they will allow the project to go to life or go out for bid. So the initial amount of money that you would basically be funding is about $60,000, which again is your 80% reimbursement money coming back. So what we're here today for, because you are the county fiscal body, you have to sign a letter of commitment that if you are awarded the funds, that you are as a fiscal body in support of providing the $608,000 to support this project. I know this is short notice, but everything just kind of fell into place and we discovered that ADA projects were a part of the call for projects and that they were eligible for funding. As we've talked to the commissioners over the time that we've been working on this, you know, they obviously, like you, would struggle to find $3 million in your budget to be able to afford this. And again, like I said, working on these ADA projects is not a gun to your head that says you have to do it all at once. But you do have the responsibility to spend money every year to do this. If you don't get the funds, you're still going to have to figure out a way to start addressing some of these through your local budget. This was just an opportunity that we saw to do it at one shot and get it out of the way. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Well, we did all of these things. We still wouldn't be free from a ADA suit from somebody tripping on something.
No, you still wouldn't. But, you know, the, the goal of the ADA is to make your facilities accessible. No matter where they're at within the county's jurisdiction.
Did I understand correctly that we're not committing to the particular timetable? We're committing to start and begin to continue to work on the projects?
Yes. What, what the next phase of what the commissioners would be required to do is to look at what projects out of the list that we put together in the ADA plan that they would want to address next year. This just, this project just addresses all of those residential subdivision problems at, at one shot.
And do you know why these were not built to standard? Or if the standard's changed?
I don't, I don't think that any local government unit is, has been successful. I know Columbia City has a very aggressive program that they've been working on for the last 10 years. I think Allen County has spent about $5 million and they're nowhere near being completed. In answer to your, a better answer to your question, I was the executive director of the Allen County Highway Department in the 90s. We were responsible for the inspection of residential subdivisions. We looked at streets. We didn't look at sidewalks. And no one really paid attention to whether or not they were compliant with the ADA standards. And as you know, individual home builders usually are responsible for sidewalk construction. And it was just something that was overlooked back in the 90s and we're paying the price for it today.
So it's not that any developer didn't meet their responsibilities?
No, it, it wasn't that. It was just that there, there just was a lack of attention to that particular detail when residential subdivisions were constructed.
And I would back that up. Our, if you ask Brandon, our job was to make sure the roads in those subdivisions were done to specs. Nobody thought about sidewalks and.
Is that something that someone is checking now? Building department, planning department, roads, are those being checked on any future projects?
Anytime there's a new subdivision, they have to, they have to be, the roads have to be inspected and built to our specs specification.
But is anyone making sure sidewalks are ADA compliant this point going forward?
Oh. I hope so. I, I, no, I mean, what I had to tell you is, is, is Tammy Kippenhammer has become the ADA coordinator, taken, she's taken my place. It's easier because she's here every day, all day, and she can deal with people like Bill so much better. So. Now, I do want to tell you something to, to sweeten the pot just a little bit here for you, okay? Over the last three or four years, the county has given the regional sewer district money so they could try to get going. It amounted to a little over $300,000. Last week, we got our check. We were repaid for that money, $300-some thousand. My suggestion to Jana, and I don't know if you had time to look it up or not, my suggestion to Jana was since, since the seeded funds are in good shape right now, we never really heard it. Take that $300,000 and put it in rainy day and save it, save it for that project right there. So it's, that, that's, that would be our recommendation or certainly my recommendation is to, let's, let's reuse, let's reuse that $300,000. So. So as Bill said, the reason he's here today is because the fiscal body must approve the grant application. One thing he hasn't mentioned that he probably, I know he would, is that. One thing he hasn't mentioned, and he probably, I know he would, is that there's no guarantee we're going to get this. We won't, I'll be gone, we won't know until March. So this may, this, a whole thing may be moot, but is that, am I right, Bill?
Yeah, okay, right.
Okay, so go ahead, if you got anything else to.
There's no really absolute standard to meet ADA.
Yes, there are.
I mean, you.
There's, there's federal law and federal rulemaking that requires you to meet slope standards. Curb, the curb ramp crossings have to be designed in a specific way. And one of you asked the question about how do you enforce this? One of our suggestions was going to be to the board of commissioners is that the building department start, and the planning commission, when they issue permits, start making sure that the builders are on notice that their sidewalks have to be built to ADA standards. It's very critical because it, this just becomes a snowball. And as I said, I'm very familiar with Allen County, and it, it's been a snowball there until they started to explain to people that there are requirements and you have to meet those requirements.
Clearly, we have a responsibility to correct the past and a responsibility to ensure that it doesn't happen again. So how would council like to move forward? I'd make a motion that we direct our Whitley County Council President to sign this letter of commitment to spend the funds if received in the way designed. Number one, do I have a second?
Second, and I, I guess I'd like to add. Will commissioners make sure they go to the planning commissioner, whoever, and make sure this is put in rules or however you want to say it?
Yeah, will you, Ted?
So, so, I mean, so we can stop this, you know, now instead of another 10 years down the road, we have another two additions, and they didn't do what they were told. Well, they might as well do it now when they, when they start new additions and be done. So just, I just want to make sure somebody takes care of that, and it is on.
Yeah, perfect idea. I had never thought about that.
Yeah, so we can get it started, I mean, maybe in '21. But, okay, you got to do this for the sidewalks this year from here on out, on every additions. Okay, that's all.
Okay, I do have a motion, and a second I'll call for a vote, Councilman Wheeler.
Yes.
Hodges.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Comfort.
Aye.
Over to you. Barrett.
Thank you, Bill. Have a good Christmas, be safe going down south.
All right, well, I thank you very much. I appreciate you sticking in there. I just have a few other things. Nathan and Scott, Nathan Gilger and Scott Wagner came to us yesterday. They want to buy some new software that, that helps permitting. We want to speed up the permitting process, and they, they asked us to approve that contract. They, they are paying for this out of their funds. We're not asking money, so, but they just, we, we gave them the go-ahead to get the permitting software. Becky Solway from Council on Aging, we approved her grant request. It's going to involve, I think, a couple of new mid, I believe she described them as mid-sized buses. Do you know, Thor, is that, is that a good?
It's, I think it's the same, same buses or vehicles that we've been using.
It's not the minivans, it's the.
Yes, the, the 12-passenger.
Okay.
Candy cab.
So we signed that. Oh, a, a huge thank you goes out to Brandon, Katie, his office manager, and Jennifer. They got the highway department $10,000 grant from IPAP. IPAP is our workman's compensation carrier. They had, they had, they do this grant, and they got $10,000 worth of safety equipment for the, for the county highway. Now, so I, I appreciate those, those efforts. Wasn't, there wasn't much else that we did. A, a, after the meeting, I had the opportunity to present a certificate of appreciation to Nadine Lamley. She's got 35 years in with us, so. And then while I was writing that, I thought, how long have I been around? And I figured it out, 37 years I've actually been dealing with the council, going back to my EMS days. Kim remembers those days. Yep, so I thank you very, very much for the way you, the way you handle county fiscal. I hope the taxpayers are as happy as I am. You do a great, y'all do a great job, and it's been a pleasure to, to work with you, so, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, next item on the agenda is the meeting minutes from last month.
Much more than minutes I was presented to us.
Number one, listen, a second. I'll call for a vote, Councilman Wheeler.
Yes.
Hodges.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Comfort. Over to you. Barrett. And I'm a, I'm a, I vote in favor of the president's election. Can we not sign this one?
Yeah, it has to be, it's, it's a different paper.
All right. Scott Wagner, you want to give us a health department update?
So we're going to continue to be interact for the next week. Just notified that this morning. We're seeing an average of 40 people a day testing positive for Whitley County. We've had almost over 9,000 people tested so far. Whitley County only have 700 positive. A lot of testing going on out there. Keep in mind, we'll be positive tests. A lot of our nursing home staff gets tested twice a week. We're seeing a lot of transmission in nursing homes, schools right now. So we're one of the top counties in the state to contribute. So all this time we're doing, we're doing, but not hitting this now, the holidays. Then they began, they continue to go through this through the Christmas time, the January, it will start slowing down hopefully that time. We are going to see a vaccine rollout here probably at the beginning of the year. Certain segments of the population will get those vaccines first. And just as predicted on TV, probably will get the general population started until March, I think. All depends on how quickly and effectively they get the vaccine to us. It's going to be based upon population and who are those categories in our county. So we look at medical providers, you look at nursing, you look at long-term care. We're going to base that number of doses for the county plus our overall population. So if it's smaller, it'll get less. So while we have started, we've already started our plans, invented our plans, using county facility for that. Today is that we'll have clinics, we'll shut down the health department, we'll use regular hours, use all of our staff for that. We are going to be asking later today at the department head meeting about fears or any part-time people in the county that would want to have extra hours possibly. Anybody who want to volunteer to help with that process. We're trying to do 40 people an hour, and with two nurses giving shots, which doesn't seem, it's not a lot. But when you think about where are these people going to park? But we have to watch them 15 minutes after they get shot, get shots, that, that adds up quickly. So there's going to be a lot of logistics going on all, all the time. It could be quite an issue for the county to handle this. We can't use schools if schools are in session. So, in fact, we're trying to do this in January, we probably won't be able to use the schools, so we'll have to use our county facility. So just forewarning, you may have to come for additional preparations on funding or volunteers or part-time people to help keep those rules. Again, it depends a, a lot on how much we get, but also on how many people in the public that actually want it to. So we'll have to see. There are a lot of 15 months with the vaccine, a lot of people can't get it based upon their individual diagnoses or disease, as well as age. Nobody under the age 18 is going to be able to get the vaccine, so that takes out a huge swath of population. And then also, we're worrying more about the vaccine as the states progress. And right now, we're possibly getting the Moderna vaccine only because we don't, it doesn't have the very strict requirements for sub-zero temperatures. Just normal freezing, it's going to be fine for the Moderna vaccine. As of right now, it is going to only offer humidity for 30 days, for 90 days. So because testing of that vaccine has not been pulled for five months, we really don't know much about it. So right now, it's only going to give you coverage for 90 days. So it's interesting as it continues to grow out, how it develops, what that would be like, so. It's still pretty hot. All of our deaths that have happened since August have been long-term care. So majority of our deaths are 80-year-olds and. Yes.
What are the numbers for hospitalizations versus positive tests?
Oh, so I talked to Whitely, and this was as of Thanksgiving. We're only seeing one to two Whitley County people a week being hospitalized. Most of the people in the hospital, every part of you really are from Paziast County. So most of our people are not being hospitalized with it. Of course, there are a few that ended up in Allen County as well, but not that many. What we tell people, if you're in the category of 16 and older, and especially if you have health problems, if you feel like you have a cold, you may want to get to the doctor just to have a check. The earlier you can get to the physician, the earlier you can get to the hospital, the faster that turnaround will be. It's when you wait too long, so you get some longer, it's when the trouble hits. So if you're sick, if you've got a cold, and just doesn't seem to want to go wait a couple days, you need to get to the doctor. They have therapies now that will turn that situation around in a couple days, you try it out at the hospital. So really, unless you're a really, really sick person, probably they're not going to have problems. You get to the doctor. Again, most people under 15, they have no problems at all. Like I said, we only have one death in that category, and statewide, it's very, very minimal.
Scott, is it a two-shot process?
It is, so, complicated things more. So of the people that we get a first shot to, they have to return after 28 days to get a second shot. So we're going to, we're going to do paper forms initially and put that in the computer system and try to enter on the computer right away. So they can track these people, call them back, and make sure that we're getting those. Hopefully, that will be a good thing, but of course, doubles are fine. Doubles are logistics. We've got to bring those people back again, we've got to redo it all over again twice, so it is going to be a cumbersome issue. I'd like to say when they're going to be shot left, there's a lot of processing.
And it's only good for 90 days?
So far, if you go to the journal website and look at that, they're saying that offers coverage for 90 days. They're happy because they only know.
That, that could be because that's all they've given it, you know?
We just don't know.
They've only had 90 days of testing, so that could be why that, that's not.
They just don't know. It may be longer. I think their biggest focus is on getting those frontline workers in the healthcare system to deal with the very sick people first, and long-term care. Those are the first two, because those are where people are at. But let's get those people covered first, and then we'll move gradually down the scale till we get to the general public. Questions?
I don't know if you've got it figured out, how to get it done.
It's a whole nother story when you get to public care, and are waiting in line, and you've got to do security of that, you've got to deal with the weather with that, you've got to deal with rooms in the building that we need to be blocked off. Once those people have left the building, you've got to clean. It's really going to take effort for everybody in the county.
Just a thought, I don't know how receptive they would be or if even possible, but you've got Eagle Tech Academy sitting over there empty.
We've considered that. I have talked with Dr. O'Connor about possible use anyplace, so that maybe we can see that to another area we can do that. All the, how much we're going to get, we're only going to get them for the doses. That's easy enough to do, yeah. We're going to have to come thousands, millions.
I think we're also thinking of something at the 4H ground.
Possibly, we've got to run that.
How is it in the school system, do we have a?
It's pretty hot right now. There's quite a huge transmission. Keep in mind, too, that we have the normal head cold rhinovirus out there, as well as flu is out there now. And you can't say without 100% possibility that some of these tests don't cross over to those illnesses as well. So if you have the flu, or if you have something else, it might detect that too on the positive test. So we're seeing a lot of transmission of that. It doesn't seem like it's happening in, in the school classrooms, though. We're not having classrooms of kids leaving. Only the teachers say, and they're all close contacts. But just it seems to go from grade to grade, different classrooms. But Dr. O'Connor said before Thanksgiving that they were having about five other kids a day out with illness. It's a lot. Let's go on a poll about the similar. They're having 20, 30 kids a day everywhere.
No, thank you. You want to speak to that now? I don't know what that was.
Yeah, so the last thing that I was going to talk about is I sent you guys an email about the CARES Act funding, the ordinance, and the additional appropriation that we're going to have a special meeting on for the 15th. So I spoke with Laura Rogers from State Department of Accounts, and she said that we need to adopt the ordinance because we need to move the funds that we receive from the state, from the CARES Act fund to county general. And at that point, with this ordinance, it becomes county general funds. So when it becomes county general funds, then you can do the additional appropriation that the commission, for all the projects that we have COVID-related. So we received $1,105,489 in CARES Act funding. So that ordinance can be either approved today, or if you guys want to wait until the 15th, that is fine too, and we can do both on the. I also have a breakdown of all the expenses, if anybody wants to see them.
If you could send us the list of expended expenses to go along with what you've already sent, that'd be helpful. Yeah, I think that that's something that we could certainly address in our special meeting on the, on the 15th. Council will be meeting again on the 15th to address this.
Eight o'clock.
Eight AM, yep. Well, Bill, I, I, this has been a real privilege to serve with you. I know this is your last regular stated council meeting. And on behalf of council, we just want to say thank you. You're a local legend in Whitley County. I remember my first time voting, I was so excited to vote for you. Obviously, you know that I'm very close with your grandson and the amount of work that we put in to help you in your attempt to be elected to state representative at the time, but just filled with excitement my first time to vote because you were on the ballot. You certainly influenced me in, in my political path, and so we just want to say thank you for, for all of your years of service, everything that you've done for, for Whitley County.
Well, it's been a pleasure and a challenge, and I've been fortunate to work with a great group of people. This is a great group, and, and we've always had good council and commissioners since I've been around here, which makes it a lot easier. Very thoughtful, and I, and I thank all of you. I appreciate all that you've done for me. Thank you.
Absolutely, we did come together, we want to present you with, with this. We, this, this is unique, there's only three prints. And obviously, you know, one hangs in the commissioner's office.
Yeah.
And there's one in the courthouse, and, and now you have a print of these blueprints from the courthouse.
It was me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I've spent a lot of time around that corner.
That's right, you have.
Started earlier than that, my mother was a deputy auditor back in the 40s. And I guess that's when I first started getting interested in county politics, the county, what it takes to run the county. Pretty complicated, it's changed a lot. And 99.9% of the changes have been good. This, this is a, this is a great group of people, a great county, and everybody pitches in really well to help this place run. We should all appreciate that. Thank you, all of you, thank all of you. We've got good departments, I mean, it's. The good that this has done, the county council and commissioners have done is because we've had good people in all the offices for a long, long time. So they're here to be thanked too.
Is there anything anyone from the public would like to add to today's meeting? Okay, hearing none, councilman over to you. Oh, I'm sorry, Rosemary, go ahead.
Well, with COVID, I think we'll talk to a lot of the county reporters and other towns. And I think our commissioners and our councilmen both. We're working on being employees and hoping we'll get through the 16th county, have the things for our three departments. And all counties don't have that, we have been very, very fortunate, I just want to say thank you.
I'd like to give you a brief example, oh, well, we get along here that doesn't work all the time. Jim Argabright was chairman of the commissioners. I was chairman of the council, we went to the, at that time, a Democrat and a Republican went to the state of Indiana to try and get a, some money, which we had to get, but Jim gave a presentation, then he said, I'll turn it over to councilman over here to give his part of this. And the chairman, I think, said, you guys talk to each other? You don't have that in every county, but we've had it here, and it's been good.
Was there anything else that council would like to add? Councilman Comper, Warner, Hodges?
Yes, I would like to, and I know it's council commissioners, but I would like to thank Tom Western publicly for your years of service and everything that you've done for the county, let you know how much I appreciate that. It's going to be different for you, but you've been doing this for a long time, I want you to know, I appreciate you. And I also then want to know, let Don know that I appreciate him, because as a shirt-tail family member and somebody that grew up in Musco, I've watched Don be involved with the community in one way or another, whether it was Little League baseball, EMS, EMS coordinator, commissioner for practically my entire life. I've known, I've known your Don since I was, well, old enough to remember things. And I appreciate your service, I appreciate your heart for what you do for the county, for what you've done for the county. I know you and I don't always side eye, but I always have a unique appreciation for you because I know that you're always trying to do what's right for the people that you represent.
It doesn't bother how we get along, so we just, I, I, I really appreciate you too.
Thank you for your years of service and good luck.
Thank you.
Councilman Wheeler?
Yeah, I would like to say, Bill, thank you, Tom, thanks, Don, thanks. Most of all, George, good luck Friday.
Yeah.
Hope everything turns out good for you, we'll be thinking about you.
Yes, we will.
So.
Okay, and Councilman Barrett, is there anything to add? I don't think he has audio, does he? I think we're just going to skip over him. And I have nothing to add, so I'll adjourn the meeting, thank you all.